All right, I'm going to open the meeting. It is 7:00 PM. We are at the Public Safety Complex. This is a meeting of the Town of Paxton's Select Board. Up first is we have an appointment. Appointing Jonathan Sturgis as a full-time public safety officer. Mike, if you'd like to come on up.
Actually, Jonathan, I know you like your podium, so I'll...
Sure.
Yeah, come on right up front, John.
Sure.
Don't be shy. I want to thank you for taking the time today to... Let me present John Sturgis to you. John is 41 years old, lives in Hubbardston. He's married with three children. John used to work with us. He worked part-time for us for about three years. Currently, he's finishing up on his bachelor's degree. And very soon, we're waiting for certification through Mass Criminal Justice, and then he will be certified as a full-time police officer. So that's why today I'm going to request that the board appoint him as a public safety officer until that certification comes in, where he can be transitioned over to a full-time police officer. John also, I want to just mention, did 14 years in the military. And he flew on a C-130, and he was a flight engineer. So it's pretty impressive. John is going to be a great addition to the department. Already knows the town, already knows our procedures, already went through field training. So it's going to be a very quick transition once that certification comes in. So I'd like to recommend to the board and ask your approval to appoint John as a full-time public safety officer until his certification comes in.
Thank you, Mike. Does anybody have any questions?
No, thank you for your service. And you did two or three tours?
Three, I think.
Multiple tours, different locations.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll leave it at that, but thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your service. I actually don't often enjoy reading resumes, but I enjoyed reading yours.
Oh, thank you.
So I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve him as a safety officer until he passes his certification.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Very good. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, I know. Have a good night.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. I can absolutely move down, I have room. All right. Carol doesn't smell, I'm just trying to move down. All right. So the next up, we have the Board of Registars, a board update. Come on up.
Sorry, I'm moving things, I'm sorry.
As asked to come in for a board update, there's not really much to update, though. We've not met since December. And I've met with you since then to discuss all the things that we talked about as far as the recommendations for the early voting in person and the early voting by mail. So we do have a meeting coming up the end of April, and there's really nothing, no votes or anything that I anticipate. It's just more of getting ourselves ready for the upcoming election, make sure we have, you know, staffing for the different... The town meeting and the town election. But I don't know if there's not much going on.
That's good.
That's okay, right? Exactly. Any questions for Lori?
Actually.
No, no questions for Lori?
All right, short and sweet.
All set? Thank you!
Thank you.
Any dates coming up that people need to know of? Lasted where to vote or absentee ballots?
If I knew all those dates off the top of my head, but they're all on the website. I think the last date I registered to vote is May 26th. If that's a Friday, I might be making that up. I don't have a lot of dates memorized. But in any case, yeah, everything's up on the website.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't think we'd expect you to have those memorized, Lori. All right. Next, we have the Insurance Advisory Committee. Who's here? Come on up, how are you?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pete DeFlorio, Paxton Water Department, here tonight for the Insurance Advisory Committee. We are up for renewal. Currently, after our last plan, we went from a calendar year to a fiscal year plan, which was huge for budgeting. Maya came back with several different rates. When we signed with them initially, they came back with a cap of 10.5%. Signing with Maya, we were able to lock in a 6.76% increase. Being that it's a group, we were able to get the lower rate because health insurance rates are claim-based. So we got lucky on that. So it really doesn't feel as painful as it could have. We did vote to choose to bundle with Blue Cross for Vision. There is no rate increase on dental. So the total would be the 6.7%. And the Vision is actually better at a lower cost.
Okay.
We did have multiple lengthy discussions on the opt-out program, which the town has offered. And we...I'm sure you have the numbers in front of you, maybe?
Yeah, we do.
We did increase that, depending on the percentages, pending your approval. This was a lengthy discussion with a lot of different percentages being bounced around and try to make it profitable for everyone if somebody decides to opt out.
Okay. So the summary that...just tell me if I have the understanding correct. The advisory committee would like to increase the amount of the opt-out in a tiered fashion?
Yes.
Based on longevity?
Yes.
Similar to how we handle our health insurance rates as it is, right?
Yes, yes.
And then also consider offering another option for somebody to drop from a family plan to a single plan?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Do you know, or do you have right there the original opt-out numbers? Carol probably won't know.
The original opt-out numbers were $6,000 for a family and $2,400 for an individual per year.
Okay. That was the amount that we would...
Pay across the board.
Pay...
Yeah.
Okay. That's the amount that the town paid when somebody opted out?
Yes. Those payments would be made monthly to the individual.
Okay. And so the switch right now, we're looking at three options. So at the 80% level, so for employees that were... What's the timeframe on that 10-year hire dates before? Do you remember?
I don't know that.
They're all different. The union is...
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Right, right. So for individuals that are at the 80/20, we're looking at an individual opt-out of $3,360, a family-to-individual downsize of the same amount, and then a $8,400 opt-out for a family plan.
Yes.
And then it drops off for 75 and 70%.
Yes.
Okay.
Which would still save the town money on the total cost if somebody decided to opt out. All three options would save the town money.
Yep.
If someone decided to opt out. I don't have the numbers in front of me, I can go to my truck and get them, but...
Oh, no, we don't.
And I don't think we've increased it for several years.
Not since we incepted it, right?
I think it might have gone up once. Was it just once it went up, Donna, or twice? It's never gone up? I thought it went up once, no? Well, then it needs to go up then. I thought it went up. I thought we discussed going up once.
Right. There was a bunch of different percentages being tossed around, and it was multiple meetings with lengthy conversations to try to come up with a reasonable amount for the employee, but also for the town. Because if somebody opted out and somebody came on, like the new hire tonight, you always have to have that money in the bank. You know? So we were very cautious about what we did. So it's not to give people a raise, per se, but at the same time, keeps it reasonable for everyone.
And is the policy that they've got to be already accepting health insurance? They can't just come on and opt out?
No, you would have to be on for a full calendar year.
Yeah, okay.
Before you could opt out.
Okay.
So no matter what, if somebody chooses to pursue this, the town is saving money?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, because we were paying already.
Yeah. All right. Any questions for Pete?
I don't have any questions.
Can I just...I mean, I think I know the answer, but can you just clarify the penultimate sentence about the base rate would remain the same for 70% increase incrementally as the place longevity increases?
Yeah, that's a good question.
We just based that on longevity. For someone that's been here 30 years, you know, if they get married or, you know, whatnot, or decide they don't want the town health insurance, they found something that they feel is better and cheaper, it's kind of like raises, basically.
Is there a matrix to that, or like a rhythm matrix?
So is it going to go up each year, or does this stay the same?
This is our proposed opt-out. It's not to say that there's going to be an increase every year. I honestly can't say that I would support an increase every year. But this is a step above where we were.
I understand that, I'm just not sure what that sentence means, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's a valid question.
Donna, do you know?
Just jump in real quick. So because this hadn't been reviewed in a number of years, we just kind of felt it was time to take a look at it and do some revisions to it. And we did also discuss in our meetings as well that, you know, this is something to just kind of keep in mind as we do meet each year. Not that we're going to try and change it every year, but to keep in mind that, you know, every two, three, maybe four years, to just make sure that we're keeping an eye on this, making sure that the numbers make sense, you know, as we get older employees who finally get out of that 80%. And, you know, maybe at some point, the insurance rate might drop to a 65, you know, split or something, you know? Then at those points, it would need to be readjusted. But because it hadn't been looked at for so long, so we just kind of took a glance at it this time to make these.
For us, this was a stepping stone because everything has gone up substantially. So obviously, the opt-out program needed to catch up, if you will.
I just wasn't sure whether, behind the scenes, there was another... But you said matrix, that every year it goes up and up. That's all?
No.
I was confused by that sentence.
So we're...
That's fine.
So what we're voting on right now is for this year and these numbers, and nothing further?
Yeah, and if it changes, it'll come back to us.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Anything else, Pete, before we...
That's all.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Insurance Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set? Thanks, Pete.
Have a great night.
Nice motion.
Thank you for your work in this.
I practiced in front of the mirror.
All right. Tom? So we now have an update from the Board of Health?
This is a first. Yeah, this space is beautiful.
Very different, isn't it?
I don't blame you for moving out on the white building. I'll second that vote.
Thanks for coming in, Tom. Can you give us a quick update of what we've been working on?
At least I could do for that. Oh, yeah, so Board of Health, things are going very well, especially now that COVID's done.
Thank you.
But before, when we had COVID, things went well anyway because we had Julia on the Board of Health, and she did amazing job for this town, I'll tell you. And she ran all those programs like nobody else could have. So I personally would like to thank her for all the work she did there. She did a wonderful job there. But now she can calm down a little bit.
Start taking a breather, yeah.
No, that's all behind us, but she's still keeping an eye on that. You know, of course, we do the septic system maintenance and working with people that have problems on that stuff. But of course, right now, the main thing is our trash collection contract is up for renewal this year, and it's out to bid. And we haven't had a real problem with our current trash hauler. He's been doing a good job, and we're...people are pretty happy with the people that have to manage him. But it's called for, we have to put it out this year, and hopefully, it'll keep the price of the increase down a little bit. I think we have some interest. Maybe we'll get one or two other bids that come in. But we should have those in the next week or two in time so we can decide what to do for the 1st of July.
Excellent.
Besides that, I'd say everything's going along just fine. Not too eventful right now.
I agree. Thank you for the accolades, Tom, I much appreciate it. Yeah, COVID is thankfully coming to an end. It's, of course, still out there, but it's not the public health emergency it once was, which is very nice to see. The only questions I'm fielding now are usually coming from daycares or town departments, if there's an employee who tests positive just around, you know, dates and when they can return and whatnot. So I get that still on a somewhat regular basis. But everything else has dropped off, thankfully. You know, there's no more vaccine clinics or, you know, constant contact tracing and all of that that I was spending 30 and 40 hours a week on previously.
But good to know that if this happens again, or in some other fashion, we're in pretty good shape and prepared to...
Absolutely.
To manage those kind of things. And I think it went pretty smoothly, even though it was the first big thing. And I can't think of any real catastrophic setbacks we had during the event. And now with the experience we have and everything is saved, as it were, we got plenty of supplies stored up in the attic. So we'll roll the thing out if it has to be done.
Yep. We learned a lot.
For all as well.
Yep. Thank you, Tom.
My pleasure.
Any questions for Tom?
Nope, thank you, Tom. Nice to see you.
Have a good night.
All right. We have next the Finance Committee to discuss revisions to the FinCom bylaw. Are we...we're a little ahead of schedule, not a ton. Are you expecting more people?
Not sure, but we're prepared to begin.
You're prepared to begin?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to come forward?
Yeah.
Otherwise, I can go through a couple of things first, if you'd rather wait and see.
No.
Okay. So if there's only two of you here, I'm assuming you don't need to open a meeting?
No, no.
We're the designated working group.
Oh, you are the designated working group, okay. All right. So we got the updated bylaw. What I figured I would do is just have you touch on each of the changes and the reasoning behind the change, and just go through it. I don't want to stop you and ask a bunch of questions in the middle of it. I want you to get the opportunity to just go through it. Then if there's any questions, we can ask questions and then decide whether it's something that we need to look at any further or if we're prepared to vote on it tonight or not. Sound reasonable?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the first...there was a couple of small changes in Section 1.1. It looked like you changed a few things just to say committee board or commission of the town unless required by their bylaw or unless allowed by select board declaration.
Yeah, you recall when we first came before the group, we had used the word standing committee? And that was not really...
Defined.
Like by anybody, for the lack of a better word?
Yes.
So rather than just say town committee, we kept in mind that there are town committees, there are boards, there are commissions. So we've expanded standing committee to be boards, commissions, and committees. The second thing in that section is we added the last phrase, unless allowed per select board declaration. So the reason we added that was because if you stopped and put a period before that phrase, that would end it. And yet, there are two sections down below to speak to that point. So that was kind of an opening to speak to what I believe is Section 1.8 and 1.9.
Okay.
Which I don't want to get ahead of myself, but in 1.8 and 1.9, the authority still rests with the Board of Select...or Select Board, excuse me. There were no changes in Section 1-2. Section 1-3 looks like a huge change, but we just made one sentence into two sentences. Because there are members who may choose to resign or not be reappointed. So we addressed that issue. And then there are instances, few and far between, but it could exist, where a member's attendance is so negligent that they're asked to leave the committee. So again, we shaded everything to let you know what the changes are, but essentially, the changes were just expanding one sentence into two sentences.
Okay.
Section number four, it talked about a committee being chosen. We thought that had the wrong connotation, so we added the word a member being appointed.
That makes sense.
Section number five, it said the committee. Just on the outside chance somebody wants to know what committee, we said the Finance Committee. Section number 1-6, it said in the year. And the question was, well, what year? The subsequent year. We will organize following the annual meeting for the subsequent year. Section 1-7 speaks to...we changed standing committee to committee boards and committees. And then 1-8 and 1-9 really get into the substance as to why we're in front of you to change the bylaws or amend the bylaws in the first place. And that is, there could be instances where the select board thinks that a member of the Finance Committee serving on one of those other boards, commissions, and committees would be appropriate. You never had the authority to do that because the bylaws stopped you. What we're saying is the authority still rests with you, but you have the authority to do that. The 1-9 basically said, on the chance that the select board doesn't think of it, maybe that new committee is thinking, hey, we need some help from the Finance Committee. So they could make that recommendation to the board. And the third piece is, what if the Finance Committee was the one that says, hey, folks, we think we could help out on this particular committee. Can you open the door and let us join? And the old bylaws stopped in Paragraph 1, didn't allow that to happen. Articles 1-8 and 1-9 allow that, but if you read it carefully, the declaration and the authority rests with the board. So it's not that the Finance Committee is trying to usurp any of that authority, have any of it transitioned to us. It just opens the door to no, to be maybe. And that's really what the entire reason we're before this group in the first place is. That's all of what Section 1 is. Section 2, not going to lie to you, we added two sections. On the occasion of our last meeting, it just struck us that there needed to be a little bit of clarification. Is the Finance Committee in charge of the budget? Is the town administrator in charge of it? Is the select board? And we just wanted to go on record as saying, with all the resources that we've cited, Division of Open Services, Mass General Law, our own town bylaws, our new financial management policies, it rests to produce at the Finance Committee level. It's approved by the...at the annual town meeting, so we're not looking to assume any additional authority. We're just looking to define what has been the practice as long as I've been on the Finance Committee that we do the ultimate responsibility is ours. Item 2-3 basically says, there could be some policies that exist currently. There could be some policies that may exist in the future that challenge that, but we wanted these bylaws to say the authority to produce the annual budget each year. In spite of those policies, regardless of those policies, rests in these bylaws that we produce it. That's been a little bit of a rub, but that was basically our position to clarify, not to challenge, but just to define specifically what is our wish, what is our understanding, and what has been the practice for, again, as long as many of us have been on the Finance Committee. So it looks like a lot, but that's what was meant to be. All the other ones now just simply change what used to be item 2-2 and a prior rendition of this is now 2-4. Every one of them has moved up too because we've added those two. In 2-4, we changed year to season. We changed standing committee to boards, commissions, and committees. We basically are saying that the budgets can come to the Finance Committee through the town administrator, which has been the practice this year, or if something changes, directly to the Finance Committee. But at one particular point, or the end particular point, is they land at the Finance Committee. Don't want to take the town administrator out of play, who was an integral part of it this year, so we're leaving that there. They can come through her to us. Or as some department heads have chosen, which may change in the future, they came directly to us. And we're just saying that both of those should be okay. We talked about some materials being submitted to us immediately. We've dumbed down that particular word, and we've said contemporaneously. Upon the submission of the budgets, we'd like other information contemporaneous to that. We changed the simple word in 2-6. Should has one connotation, shall has another connotation. So that was a little bit of wordsmithing on our behalf. 2-7, participate, you know, took on the appearance of we can attend, but we can't raise our hand, we can't be recognized. So we wanted to say, if you're going to have these joint meetings with third parties, whether it's the auditors or the bond company or the insurance company, that we be allowed to actively participate. And whether that's in the form of a formal joint meeting or not, we just don't want to join the meeting, come to the meeting. We want to actively participate in the meeting. Keeping in mind, it's the select board meeting and not ours. The last section, Section 3, we just clarified from committee to Finance Committee. In some cases, there was no reference to committee, so we added finance. We basically are speaking of, when did we get this material? That you recall, last meeting, that was a little bit of a rub. Well, we're basically saying, that'll be determined by the Finance Committee Chairman each year as a reasonable date. January 1st would not be reasonable. April 1st would be unreasonable. But somewhere in the middle, because conditions, circumstances, things could change year to year. You might need more time doing COVID 2.0 as opposed to not having to have that particular luxury this past year. Item 3-4, we basically say, if we have a problem getting a budget, we said it, I think, a lot more eloquently than this, but the essential point of it, that's the town administrator's problem to go get it for us. We don't want to have any authority over those departments. We don't have any authority. But if we're having trouble getting the budget, the town administrator, who would probably know before we do, but on the chance that she does not, we would inform her that we need some help to get this in. And then the rest, as you can see, there were no changes. So the takeaway is to change it to allow Finance Committee members to be on other committees. Not the least of which, we're chomping at the bit to be at EDC. Where now, where we're an ex officio, non-voting advisory member, we'd like to be upgraded to a full-voting member because we think that particular committee needs a Finance Committee person, and it needs a little help to get off the ground right now. So that's why we're anxious for this to move forward. In the other was, just to clarify a little bit in terms of the budget. Mass General Law, our own policies, we could cite seven instances where it says the Finance Committee is responsible for the annual budget. We want to take any question as to whether or not that's been altered or changed or will change out of play, that currently, that's what these bylaws will say. will change, out of play, that currently that's what these bylaws will say. So the other thing I would say, if you compare this to the existing bylaws, this is like, we've turned you-know-what chicken into chicken salad. I mean, those are an embarrassment. They are long overdue, and, and we're quite confident and quite pleased and quite proud of these particular bylaws, and maybe they can be used as the gold standard as other boards amend ours, amend theirs. So it's as near perfect as four working group members can make it. It's been approved unanimously by the Finance Committee at our last meeting to bring forward to you, and now it's in your hands to hopefully get it in front of the townspeople at the annual town meeting.
Who were the other two working group members?
Who were the other two members?
Yeah.
Jeremy is one, and I apologize for not introducing him. Steve Robesco, who couldn't make it, and Rich Fenton, who we all know is recuperating right now.
Right.
And, and while the other members are valuable members, they were all too willing to delegate it to the working group. They were kept abreast every step of the way, and they've seen the final draft, and they approved it a meeting or two meetings ago.
Okay.
So we're all in.
Great, thank you. Jeremy, did you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I think Mark summed it up as well as good as can be done. It's just, I don't necessarily agree that the original ones were as bad as they look. It's, I mean, you're talking 1973, it's time for an update.
Yeah.
I think it's just, and, and the, the point of wanting to allow the opportunity to ask for more participation in things is a good thing.
All right. Carol Kirk, any questions, comments, concerns?
I don't have any concerns or questions. Kudos to you guys for taking this on. It seems to have a more forward-looking view than the past bylaw that, that we've had, which is where we're trying to move everything right now. So I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
I think it's a great improvement. It does the job that you set out to do, to be able to participate on other boards and committees. I would just like to make sure that you wouldn't be a part of a committee that had a budget coming forward to the Finance Committee, but other than that.
And, and we would be smart enough about that, but the final determination is made by the Select Board. And if you see that, that is a conflict, which I think we'd see on the front end that it is, and we wouldn't ask for that, but if we missed it, you're the safety net to say, not going to work.
Right. Okay. Heather?
So, the only, the only major comment I have, so 1.6, Mark. The Finance Committee shall reorganize yearly by electing its officers for the subsequent year within 30 days of reorging. Didn't we talk about last time we met, that there's actually another bylaw that already requires that? And that this was redundant, and we try not to put redundancies, because then we have bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, yeah, there was a discussion in our, and we talked about that, and our position was reiteration, saying it again in another place, as long as it's not contradictory to that, just made sense to us.
What happens if it eventually becomes contradictory? Because you could theoretically, you know, you could have something changed, and the board could say, hey, we do all of our appointments for July 1st, let's say reorg has to happen by August 1st.
Yeah.
I'm just, I just worry about referencing a specific provision that's also already a separate bylaw in and of itself. I mean, when we go to redo the bylaws, you know, maybe we take that one out and it doesn't exist at all, but I just worry that it references another bylaw there.
So, so this is, you know, of, of all of them, this is probably the, the most benign. It's a good thing that we're reorganizing. I would submit to you, if the town changes the overall bylaw, we'd come back and we'd amend this friendly to agree with that new provision.
It's just a matter of remembering to do that. So what's going to trigger you at that point to do that? And that's where we run into problems, because obviously, we're not all going to be here forever, and somebody else is going to have to remember that there's a reference somewhere else for that.
The only thing I say to that, I wouldn't have a problem with the current wording, because you're appointed by the moderator. So you don't come on our sheets of appointments anyway.
Right, which played into our discussion here in terms of, we, we are appointed by the moderator, not by the Board of Selectmen. So shouldn't it have its own provision in its own bylaws, which was one of our takeaways? That's why we left it in.
I think the other one, if I remember the bylaw provision specifically, it says all town committees.
So it's not separated out by appointing authority?
Yeah, because if we say that, you know, like, that includes the Select Board, that includes the Water Board, and they're both elected officials.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we could maybe leave this in and say, in accordance with existing, or whatever bylaws might change in the future.
As long as, as long as there's a reference somewhere. To Julia's point, you know, in 10 years from now, when, you know, there could be different people sitting at the table, and something changes, we may not all recall what happened.
So would you be open to saying, changing to 1.6 to reflect from the current wording in the, in the town bylaw?
Yeah, the only, the only thing you get a little, that gets a little wonky, Jeremy, because usually I would say you would just refer to, you know, in accordance with bylaw 2.5.
Right.
Right? But none of our bylaws are currently codified.
Okay.
So it's just the bylaw. So it just, I would just refer to, guess back to the name of the current bylaw, or say, you know, any successor provisions, or something like that. So it covers, so if that bylaw changes, this automatically updates.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's all I have in this, other than, Mark, in order to get this to legal, I need this in a workable Word document, because this is currently in PDF.
There's a Word document.
You'll, you'll have it within a day or two.
So my-
So the friendly change to that, I, I think that, I'm not going to identify where they are, but there are probably two deal breakers in this particular bylaws. That's not one of them.
Yeah.
So if we can make that change to move it forward, we're, we're amenable to doing that.
Okay. All right. So if there's no other concerns or questions, my suggestion would be, at this point, we move it to legal, let them review it, and then, once we have their review back, we can come and vote on it as a board. Sound reasonable?
The goal is to get all that back before the 24th.
Right.
That's when we would vote on it, when we-
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll have it on the warrant article, right, for the 24th?
Right.
So hopefully, a week or so, we'll give Brian enough time to-
To review it.
Have that.
Yep. Sounds good.
So speaking of Brian, the motivation behind this was an email that he sent back in 2022, which is, subsequent bylaws may create exceptions to the rules.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of what it took us two pages to do, to open the door for us to potentially serve on other committees. So, so Brian won't be surprised at seeing this.
I'm sure he won't.
Right.
All righty. Anything else? You got it?
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you for coming back in.
Thank you.
All right. So next on the agenda, we have the consent items, and there are four of them. I'm going to read them off, and assuming if there are no objections, then we will consider them passed. So number one is to approve the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on March 27, 2023. Number two is to accept the resignation of Robin Taska from the Cable Access Committee, effective 3/24/23. Number three is to appoint Heather Monroe to the Cable and Communication Committee. And number four is to sign the Conflict of Interest paperwork from Dee Malone to work as an election clerk at the annual town election. Any objections? Anybody want to move anything to a different part of the agenda?
No, we got the declaration from Dee today, so.
Yep. Dee's done this before? I don't see any problem with that.
Yes, just the jack, because, um, but he's running unopposed, so I already talked with the department, and they said, it was up to the Board of Selectmen to approve or to con my work.
Appointing authority, yeah. And so there's no objections to any of the consent items? Hearing none, I declare that they all have passed. You're all set, Dee?
Thank you.
Thank you for helping out at the election. Okay, and then we move on to new business. We have to review and approve the April licenses, and I know I ask this every time, and I'm sorry, I can never remember. Can I do them as a poll? Do I have to, do we have to, we don't have to move these individually, right?
No.
Can you just read them? Yeah, okay. So let me just grab those. So license renewals for April 2023 through April 2024. For weekday soft drinks, we have Paxton Marketplace Incorporated, Paxton Sports Center Incorporated, Theo's, JLC Donuts Incorporated, DBA Dunkin' Donuts. For fruit and vegetable, we have Howes Farm and Garden LLC. For jam syrup, bread, candy seeds, honey, we have Howes Farm and Garden LLC. For nursery, stock, and florist, we have Howes Farm and Garden LLC, Pleasant View Nursery, and Robinson's Greenhouses. I will entertain a motion for these license renewals.
I will make a motion to renew these licenses.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we can sign that at the end, Donna? All right. Because we know watching signatures is good television. Next is to sign the warrant for the annual town election. You have that? Lori is not here. Does she need us to sign it in, like, session, or can we sign it after? Okay. So I just need a motion then to sign the annual town election warrant?
I'll make a motion to sign the annual town election warrant.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then, last on our agenda is to review the third quarter revenues and expenses, and our Finance Committee members are still here, so that's good, thank you. Go ahead, Heather.
This was like the most exciting part for them, right after the new bylaws. So of course they're going to stay.
I forgot, I meant to ask you to stay for that, and then I neglected to, so.
So I just did a break, brief rundown of this. I won't go into every single detail, I'll just hit the highlights. Anyone who's bored at home and wants to read, there's a couple pages of it, and I know Donna also attached the expense and the revenue sheets currently. So the revenues, we always run a little bit behind, right? So usually, Donna Kutcher and Larissa will check their numbers and make sure everything balances about middle of the month. So most of those revenues aren't posted from the prior month, right? So an example is, for us, one of our big things that come in during the month of March is our motor vehicle excise. So we're only about one and a half weeks into April. It won't be until about April 15th. So next month, because it's so important to follow this as the year ends, I'll come back just with a brief update of the revenues. I, I won't do it on the April 24th meeting, because it's too busy, but the first reading in May, I will just target it just to make sure everyone knows where we are on track on those pieces, make sure those numbers came in where we thought they would be. But in general, you know, everything should be between like 70, 75% right now. Some things are trending a little bit lower. Cemetery numbers are a little bit lower. We talk about that all the time, right? That's, that's kind of like the season, it depends on what's going on, what happens, we guess the best we can. Mostelainous recurring teacher retirement, that comes from the state whenever it comes from the state. So that's not like a, we failed to collect, it's just when they choose to pay us, we receive the income. Motor vehicle excise was at about 54%, but again, that only incorporates up to February's revenues, so we still awaiting, and March was a big motor vehicle excise month. Rentals were about 42.11%. That we know about by rentals, it's rent toll, it is 10 West property. We had something that happened at the end of last year into this year, where they ended up picking up a purchase that we should have been covering as the landlord, and we ended up taking it off the rent to cover the cost.
Mm-hmm.
And then the Warchusett Regional School Maintenance Account, that is the amount they pay us for us taking care of the row, the parking lot and so forth, and that is coming in at 61.68%. Again, it comes in when it comes in on that one. Revenue categories that have exceeded our expectations, so here's, here's the one thing to keep in mind, the caveat. So each year, when Larissa puts together the revenue sheet, she puts down the percentage, the numbers as they are that we put into the state for the tax rate, or tax recap, right? Those are not necessarily the numbers we use during budget season. Oftentimes, they're lower, because something changed in between, so we lowered the number. So it's a good sign that the numbers are coming in at 100%, but generally speaking, what we need to still do towards year end is, we take the actual numbers, and we compare them with what we actually budgeted, before we did the rework of the numbers for the recap. So we can really see, okay, we came in well based on what we told the state we were going to do, but how do we do based on what we thought we were going to do, to figure out how good we were on accuracy on that. So penalties and interest on taxes is doing pretty well. We already know what that was, we budgeted really low last year because of the tax, or not the tax, I'm sorry, the interest rates being so low, now that they're going, our numbers are coming in a little bit better, which is nice. Pilot were a little bit higher than we had projected, but that was just a pre-calculation with the assessor's office, and we weren't 100% sure on that. It's now well documented, so we know exactly what we're doing on that come next year. So that will be good. Investment income, again, that's coming in well, because our interest rates are very well. That's actually at 276%. That being said, I don't think it's going to make 100K, Mark, so don't get too excited. All right. Expenses, you know, I broke down here, so they should be between, I think I took between 65 and 75%, understanding that some things are spent upfront, some things are a little bit lagging, but in general, so a good portion of items are all within that on-target piece, and I didn't go into the details there. To date, we have not used any money in debt borrowing, historical commission, historical district, short-term interest, or the town report. Town report, we know we're going to expend, Donna's going to do the work before she pays for it. So that one's coming, but the other ones have a decent probability that they could end up close to zero still, unless there's some expenditure they have at the end of the year. Under budget, things that are below 65%, so Board of Health is running a little bit low. They don't have a heck of a lot of budget anyway, it's only $5,000, so there's, there's not that much to spend. Next year will be a little bit different, remember, because we rolled in the sanitation inspector, we rolled in the animal inspector, so that budget will be a little bit higher. Building inspector is about 50%. This year, we changed the methodology in which we paid an individual a little bit into the fiscal year, when we had the former person in that position retire. That person was getting kind of an annual pay that was divided up by the 52 or so weeks. Now we pay hourly, so if the person works 16 hours a week, we pay 16 hours. If they work 19 hours, we pay 19. If they work 12, we pay 12. So we pay for the service hours that we have. So we saw a little bit of a savings there. Cemetery commission is coming in just a little bit lower, but again, right now, you're seeing the wages for the DPW employees are still within that cemetery commission line. Next year, all of that rolls up to the DPW, and we're just getting into mowing season. COA, VN use has been a little bit slower, so they're a little bit down there. Concom has a tiny bit of their budget they use, but we went, I don't even know how many months without a Concom agent. Took a very long time to hire the person, and again, they're only four hours a week or so, about 16 hours a month, so it's, it's very tiny. Debt, we're all good on that, that's paid upfront. Elections, registration's only at 41%, but our annual town election and annual town meeting have yet to happen, so that hasn't been expended yet. Employee benefits are doing okay at the moment, 57%. Fincom, 59.27%. So I'm not going to go into those details, you guys can, everyone can read that if they're interested. Legal's doing well, we're at 44. Municipal assistance, still under 50. That's a position that was shared between the town clerk and the treasurer collector. They now have their own people, but they're still pulling out of that line for this budget season. Public safety complex is doing well. Sorry, I hit my down arrow too much. Oh, wrong way. I'm using the PDF format, so it works pretty well, until you just keep hitting the down button, and then you lose your page. Sorry. Getting there, okay. Uh, let's see, I think those are the major, and public safety complex is doing well. Pardon me, I'm getting there, I went the wrong way. Okay, there we go. All right, back on track here. Okay, sanitation, those pieces are all within the, under the 65%, Warchusett Greenways, et cetera. Things that are currently over 75% here, and I'm not sure why animal control officer is in that one, but you have the assessors, again, prepayment of things, DPW supplies are a bit higher right now. IT, we had, we purchased the computers upfront. So a lot of these ones that are a little bit higher have to do with pre-purchases. Ones to be concerned about in this section, to point out, plumbing inspector. So currently speaking, how we work the plumbing inspector is, we pay per inspection, right? So if he has 100 inspections a year, we pay 100 times whatever the rate is that we're currently paying. The problem we're running into is, we don't know what that number's going to be. We can budget X, and sometimes it's X plus four, sometimes it's X minus two, and we can run out of money in that line. Next year- Next year, we're working on kind of a hybrid approach where right now we put the money in the budget, but we're hoping to get a revolving fund section set up for it so that we can pay the inspectors out of it. So you don't have to budget the money moving the year after, right? If the inspector does 20 inspections, we pull in enough money to cover those 20 inspections with the fees and have the town collect revenue at the same time. And if it's 50 inspections, same thing. If it's five inspections, same thing. So we don't have to have a budget for that piece. But that wouldn't occur until the following year because you have to put something in place because the revolving fund, even if it passes, won't get approved through the state for the general bylaw for some time. Property insurance looks pretty high, but it's mostly paid upfront, so it's just some smaller pieces. The snow and ice is 117.21% on this piece here. They had a larger season going on. We do expect that, I think it's going to go up. We just had a tree removed that had been damaged as a result. I think that's going to be under 2K that we stuck in there, so that's going to go up a little bit more. We do have about 25K or so that we'll be able to transfer from the TA line and the, about 8,000 from the ACO line unless we put it back in the reserve fund, but we could also just transfer and cover the snow and ice deficit. So we've got options. But at least we have enough to cover it, I guess is my point on that piece. And I think that's mostly it for those. Any questions on revenues or expenses?
So the deficit for snow and ice was, is going to be about 36,000?
Yeah, I think so. Unless there's any other bills, Carol, that haven't hit the, hit the books yet. I don't know. I mean, I can, I probably should circle back with Tiffany, make sure anything else isn't covered. So at least we know what that number is. But there's nothing major I'm aware of. That being said, I don't know what I don't know, so that's, I'll check back.
That last door hammered us.
Yeah, it was nasty.
Hammered us.
Mark or Jeremy, do either of you have any questions?
I do. Heather, the overage on the snow removal for the equipment. Looks like they had another purchase. So they, it's almost 200% of the equipment budget.
Yeah, so what happens? So snow and ice is a guess, right? So each year, so what we try to do at the end of the day is in order to be able to deficit spend that, because we don't have a lot of flex in our own budget, we have to spend at least the same amount or appropriate at least the same amount we did the year before. Most towns do like a dollar more. We do like $1,000 more, something on the books. That being said, we try to guess the best we can between wages, equipment, supplies, whatever it may be. And sometimes it's not, we're not right on. This year for equipment, I believe we got, we paid for some new snow blades, new plow blades. We actually got a grant, part of a salt reduction grant. So we covered 50% of the cost of the blades, and the grant covered 50%. So that was something we didn't expect. We had a couple pieces of equipment that had some major issues during the last storm. So we were buying parts like it was going out of style.
Yeah, I saw that one up between last month and this month. I just wanted to know if it was one, one big purchase or a bunch of little maintenance.
Stuff.
Okay.
Very stuff.
Just stuff, okay.
The last one kept the mechanics very busy.
We booked a lot of stuff.
Yeah. That's what I was, that's what it, it looks like.
I think most every homeowner did too.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for Heather on revenues and expenses?
I would just say that investment income probably has gone up because we've got the ARPA money sitting in our bank account.
Yeah, absolutely.
So just bear that in mind after we spend it.
Yep. Yep, it's sitting there until it's, comes due, so. Okay.
Is she rolling, do, Carol, do you know the answer to that? So with the KIRs Act, I think we kept all the interest within the KIRs Act itself. Is she doing the same with the ARPA funds?
I'm not sure because there was differences of opinion on that. So I think you see on, if you look at your ARPA report, I think it says interest at the bottom there. I think it's kept with the ARPA fund.
Okay.
And I think we were saying that that probably just get rolled in or used for audit or whatever.
Okay. Thank you.
That makes sense.
I was just saying the investment income, just a bit.
Right. Okay. I have no correspondence. And public comment? Anybody? Nobody? Okay. Town administrators report?
Excellent. Kids' summer program, anyone interested? Kids ages four through sixth grade, and you can sign up now. Memorial Day is coming up. Parade will begin again at 10:00 AM at the Public Safety Building. After the ceremony, there'll be a, joining the Paxton American Legion posts at each of the three cemeteries in town. And then they'll be going back to Legion Hall for a luncheon. Pick up Paxton. Don't forget to add that to your calendar. That is a week-long event, it appears, April 22nd to March 1st. I mean, check out the website with Facebook posting for more information. There is special thanks to Pellegrino Trucking for donating the dumpster and Paxton Tennis and Fitness Club for hosting the dumpster. Paxton Days and Summer Jam is coming up. If you haven't marked your calendar, or if you are a vendor, you know a vendor who's interested, please contact Donna. She's always accepting more vendors, it seems. That is on Janu-, or nope, pick a different day. Saturday, June 17th from 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So it's going to be one activity and rolling into the Summer Jam. So all part of the same day. Contact Donna for questions. And please keep in mind, it is a free event. Very important. Townwide Yard Seal, that is on Saturday, May 20th from 8:00 to 2:00. If you have any questions, contact Bob Willby on that. And the rec department had their Easter egg hunt this, this past weekend. Fire Department, I was unable to tell, I didn't realize it started until 12:30. My brain had like, oh, it's at 11:00. I could be out here at 11:30. It was not. But I'm assuming, did you happen to go, Donna? Did you want to make it to the Easter egg hunt? How'd it go?
Great.
It went well?
Huge turnout, yeah. Huge turnout, actually. I took a bunch of pictures for Kathy, so she hopefully will be able to put them up. I have Carol's granddaughter as a picture on one of them, putting her face, she was so cute. So, yeah, it was great time. There's actually a video as well, which I don't know if Kathy was able to get it or not, but the, the crowd that was waiting at the line to go to the egg hunt was hilarious, right? Like huge line of people, kids. And then Christina Smith was, Olson, I'm sorry, Christina Olson was out there calling it down 3, 2, 1 for everybody to go, and then I got the video of everybody going.
It was like a mass fish.
That's a two minute.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I know.
It's longer to put the eggs out.
Yep.
They, they do a great job.
Yep.
Kathy and Laura.
Good weather this year.
Awesome. Departmental updates, buildings. So here's some important stuff. So every month, we review, and every month I put out this little chart of the building permits. You know, you can see the trends of where you're going. If you look at the little graphic, you can see building permits. So building permits here are the ones, you know, for the roof, for a structural change, for a remodel, for a deck, for a pool. Those are all in building. Again, Cheryl's working on over time pulling out the different permits so that we would just have, you know, when it's called a building permit, we know it's a house. When we have this kind, it's a remodel. When we have this kind, it's, you know, deck slash siding slash roofing and so forth. So they're all grouped together. That being said, if you look, you'll see the trend, right? So going back to July through now, you know, you had nine, 11, 11, 14, 5, 6, 11, 8. We're at a low of three this month. So the entire permits that were pulled for the month, month of March were 12. In February, we had seven, seven more. So what, 19 in February? But this year, it's kind of interesting too. So March 22, we actually had 26 more permits or 38 permits total that were pulled last March than we did this March. So, you know, I know there's different things that happen, the amount of money that's out there, COVID ending and so forth, and COVID projects. But I think it's just important to keep in mind that, you know, permits seem to be pretty much dropping again. Like we keep seeing these trends, where they go up a little bit, but they're still not going up super high, and they're coming right back down. So I think it's something important to watch revenue-wise as well on what's happening with those pieces. Cable access, I told Nick I would continue to plug this. So if you not, not already subscribed to the YouTube channel, please, please, please subscribe because once you do, and we get to 100 YouTube subscribers, you can see it live and stream. Instead of having to wait for the video to get posted or not get posted, to work or not work, you can just stream live. So as of last time I looked, there were 72 subscribers. I didn't look again. Nick seems to think it was around that number, but I will look before the next meeting and update that number. DPW is working with TITA and Howard to finish up the West Street water line. They're also, I talked to Travis, he believes there's enough in the money he has access to to be able to have them help us with the Mass Works Grant. So for those who aren't familiar, Mass Works Grant is one of the biggest grants you can get from the state. It could be, you know, anywhere from, you know, a million to multi-millions of dollars to help with the road. And we've been targeting that for a number of years for the West Street area to be able to do the water line and the road at the same time. That being said, because it's such a big project, Travis and I had a conversation about how we thought it was well worth spending a couple thousand dollars to have experts put this project together. The interesting thing about the Mass Works Grant, we're going to be applying for, for our project, it doesn't fit neatly inside the cookie cutter that most Mass Works projects fit in. I've known some TAs and some DPW directors that have been successful, but a lot of times it's like a cookie cutter project, right? Like, oh yeah, absolutely, that hits every criteria on the head. You're golden. This one's a little squishier. So we're employing the experts at TITA and Howard to assist us with that, and hopefully that will increase our chances of success.
Yeah, and if I can just add to this, this is a project that was gotten off the ground with the ARPA funds.
Yep. So we should be shovel-ready.
And the idea is to, yeah, be shovel-ready to get, you know, as close to, you know, as we can to be able to get this grant. I mean, this is important. West Street, as you know, has been a problem in terms of its water main there. We have breaks there constantly, and the part of the issue is that the water main there is incredibly deep. And so every time we have a break, it takes a long time to get to it, and there's a lot of manpower, effort, expense involved in every repair. And so this was, this is a really big deal. If we can get this done, we should be putting every effort into it in order to get it as competitive as possible to try and get this grant. So let's cross all your fingers and toes.
IT, IT pieces are going pretty well. We've had some connectivity issues. We're having issues with town hall on the regular, the public, or the town's Wi-Fi connections. We have old wires, old lines, a whole bunch of things up there. So we've tried adding a, another internet port connectivity piece to hopefully help a couple of the employees who are having trouble staying on it. When people get pushed over to the guest network, which they can connect on, they get kicked off the network. So anything they need in the network, they can access. So we've been working through those pieces. Phones, so if anyone's called the phone lines now, you might hear a nice little voice thing. If you don't like it, wait 10 minutes, I'm sure we'll change it. We're adding a voice one to the library. We have to just get that set up. And we're still having a glitch with two phones. It just has to do with how we ordered the phones because they were set up for different people, and they come pre-programmed, and then you have to look up the MAC address and work with this person and that person and so forth. So we're on the way. We do have faxes now that are up and running, so we ported over our faxes. We no longer will be using an old-fashioned fax machine for a town hall, any of the town buildings, with the exception of the library. Library does it more as a service to the regular, to residents and other folks. The police, I think, still has a hardwired fax, but fire department has also switched over to a wireless fax or an e-fax. So we got those both set up right now. The faxes go to a very specific group of people. We can add and subtract as we go, and we can also have anyone we want to be able to have access to send out a fax, if that is something that they desire, to be able to do without changing who has access to faxes. I'm excited. I'm probably more excited than anyone else, but.
So who has access to the faxes in town hall?
What's that?
Where do these faxes come to in town hall?
They come to email.
Yep, I know, but you said to certain people.
So currently, right now, what we have, because I don't know, my, my problem is I don't know what comes in for faxes anymore, right? So I don't know if there's highly confidential information. Like, an example is the fire department gets information on patients, right? So I don't want anyone to, I don't even want to touch that. I don't want to see that. I don't want that anywhere near my responsibility world. So we don't know what's coming in for other faxes. So right now, what happens is the fax comes in, the group we have set up goes to Donna, myself, and Cheryl. And if anyone gets anything, we just forward it along to that person. I think we've received, what, two rabies things for Lori, a couple toner guys, no longer wasting our toner. Joke's on them. And the weather. We got like 12 weather things in the past 24 hours. So I have a couple folks who are chomping at the bit to be added onto that list, so I asked people to just, you know, give it a couple weeks to see how it works and see what we can change. We very well might end up adding just all the major departments onto it, and then they can get anything directly, and we don't have to forward it. But right now, I just want to make sure that there's not like that one time where something super important confidential comes through, that, you know, other people should not have that piece of information, and then I wish I didn't. But aside from that, and then anyone who wants to be able to fax out, so Donna has the ability, Donna Kuchar now has the ability, and Tiffany has the ability. And I can give anyone the ability who wants it. I don't know if they want it, and I don't know if they need it, right? Because I don't, I think we receive, we definitely receive more faxes than we send. I think the only one we send now is to the retirement board, that I know of. So. Any other questions on faxing?
It's a dying technology.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
It's up to the chair, but if she says yes, then I'll take the question.
Go ahead.
What happens like with financial institutions that won't fax over any information? Or they won't email over any information?
They can fax it.
They can fax it?
Yeah, they can fax it. We'll get it.
Okay. I was just curious about that because there's so much of that that can't, they won't send over.
Well, we're down to two fax numbers. So if you are one of those folks who would like to fax us something, please double-check the fax number. But the fax number we use is the same one, the treasurer, the same one that was at town hall. But if 0966, I think it is, right? Is that something? Yes. And then if you were going to fax something to the COA, well, fax it to the town hall and we'll get it to Cindy. Any other question on faxes? So we got the expense section, blah, blah, we covered that, da, 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 da. Grants, nothing really to update on that piece. We have been working with Maria Carty and her boss, Sarah O'Connor?
Concan.
Concan? From?
Collins.
Collins, thank you. Collins Center. So we're hoping to make progress. We had a, it was a good conversation two weeks ago, but we haven't heard anything since. So we'll see. Let's see, anything else here? Procurement, so security cameras, we did our launch meeting, so that's up and rolling. Those should be installed. They're going to target to do most of it over April vacation.
Great.
So they're pretty excited about that. And they're a Connecticut company, so they don't do holidays in April.
Oh.
So they'll be working on Monday. Trash collection, so that ended up getting extended out. We actually sent it out to, I want to say, five or six vendors. We had one come back. They, the way they operate, it wouldn't be enough time for them to put everything in place so that they respectfully declined, I think would be the words. And then the others had some questions, so we got that out to them, and we did extend it. So they have until April 19th to get their materials in, and then we'll have something before this board on April 24th, after Tom and Cheryl review the RFQs, or RFPs, rather. And I think that's it. We, we still have one police officer opening. The good news is, in talking to the chief, when I started, we had one police officer opening, so.
We're at net zero.
We're right back where we were, I guess. But that is all I have on my report, unless there's any questions.
I'm here. Any questions first?
Yes, Scott.
Forgot to read the thing about the.
Oh, I, I, I think Lori took it. Oh, I, I think Lori took it, but I will just let folks know, if anyone is trying to access one of these very delightful videos, either for the Select Board, FinCom, or cable access, there has been some issues experienced that users have reported with being able to just click in the video-on-demand link itself, and you have to kind of do a workaround with the thumbnail and so forth. So because you're not going to take notes when I'm talking, Lori is going to send out a post on our news and announcements tomorrow, the description for those pieces. If you run into any problem, just contact our office, and we'll send out the information. They are, they being Nick and Scott, have been in touch with the vendor that we use to work through and see how we can resolve that issue.
Okay, very good. Neil, you missed the public comments section. We've already moved on.
Okay, so it's just an overall, it's a comment, I guess is what I would say. I love having the meetings here, I think it's great. However, I'm sitting back here looking at those three wonderful screens up there, and when I attended the superintendent's presentation, there was a lot of matter or detail that was projected, and I'm just wondering if it's possible as we move forward. I don't know what you get to see on your computers versus who speaks.
Yep.
But it would really be a nice feature to have, that the audience could kind of go along with you, and we could take notes for whatever comments might come out at the public session.
You'd like a multimedia meeting, would you, Neil?
Well, I don't know how I would refer to it, but I'm just saying that we could see kind of what you're seeing or reviewing. When Mark made his presentation about the bylaw check, if you had it on your screen, and he had it in his hard copy, it would just be, I think, beneficial to be able to see some of that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
To be able to interact with the board, that's what I'm saying.
I think we're, we're working toward trying to get more of it up there. It's just trying to get through the technology pieces of it that can be somewhat a little bit challenging, so we're working on that part.
Okay, so, I mean, a timeline, 90 days, 100 days, this year?
I couldn't tell you. This year, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That's the hope, yep. All right. Anything further? We have no executive session tonight.
Yes, oh, well, I have finance here. Kirk has a conflict with the meeting coming up on the 24th. Let me just look at my calendar here. And we're looking to possibly move it. So right now, the meeting is on the, Monday, the 24th, and that was a joint meeting with both of our boards. So I wanted to check availability for potentially one other day that week. What do I got here? Tuesday looks good for me, Wednesday is good for me, Thursday is not good for me. Tuesday, actually, might not be good either, actually.
Do we know what, if this room is available? Because this is the only.
That's the other thing we have to look at, yeah.
Julia, I know we're not a public session, but can I add, don't the Warren articles close on the 24th? So if you move the date off of the 24th, is that going to be a problem?
No.
I don't think so, because we would just put it off a day.
It's a, it's a, it's a, our Select Board arbitrary closing date, there's no statutory or bylaw or.
And we were thinking, the Wednesday, finance general meets anywhere on a Wednesday. I think you planned a meeting on a Wednesday.
I think it should be done by then, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be done by the 19th.
19th is our last scheduled meeting.
The 26th is the Wednesday. 26, I'm. Yes, the 20, I could do the 26th, I think.
I think that'd be better.
That's the Wednesday.
Wednesday would be better, if that's okay with finance.
We could run it, we're meeting Wednesday, we could run it by.
Should we meet on a Wednesday?
Yeah.
Just to see if we can get it.
Check on it, and then you can get in touch with Donna.
In a pinch, I could do it on Zoom, but it's just not as.
No, not effective.
Not as effective.
No, it's not.
Especially for a meeting this big.
Yeah, yeah.
I prefer any person.
So we want to ask everybody Wednesday if we can move to 24th to the 26th.
To the 26th, yeah. If we can, and then.
I'd say I'd let you know, but you're going to be scheming.
You didn't let Donna know.
Yeah, I'll let Donna know. And that's plenty of time to get that on.
Well, 26 is nice too, because it gives an extra two days in the week.
Yeah.
And that gives Brian a little more time as I keep hammering.
As well, yeah.
Bylaw, review bylaw, review next bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good. Okay, so we'll wait to hear on that. All right, if there's nothing further.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Goodfellow.